We'll call this meeting to order to Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors. Good morning. Good morning. Call this meeting to order to the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for September 20th, 2022. Roll call, Mr. Beeter.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Tralka.
Here.
White.
Here. I have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions of the day. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received as proposed or as amended?
All moved.
Second.
Moved in second and any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed, motion carried. Public comments? Anybody from the public like to comment on anything other than what's on the agenda? Anyone online? Seeing none, moving on to claims and payments. Mr. Beeter.
Total for the weekly claims and payments is $380,858.55. There weren't any outstanding large amounts. Move to approve?
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none, this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Tralka.
Yes.
White.
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a presentation, a transitional housing project by Tom Ikas, Cedar Valley Housing Corporation. Good morning, Mr. Ikas.
Good morning. I'll just make a little, not an introduction, but I said, because I don't want to take anything away from your presentation, but why I put this on the agenda and at this time. I think we all know and have all been probably a part of conversations and discussions over the years regarding transitional housing. And it's a topic on the forefront of many people's minds and a lot of people have continued to work on this. And when the RPA dollars came available, it seemed like an opportunity possibly for the county to participate in a project similar to this. And I'd hoped we'd be further along, I guess, in talking with our consultants and understanding that, but since that's only going to be a couple of weeks away, thought maybe it would be good to hear about the presentation and help us then be able to ask questions of our consultants on what types of projects and if this would be something that we could get involved with. So seeing that, thank you all for being here.
Thank you, Lynda. Most of you know we've been talking about mental health and the folks in the criminal justice system for a lot of years, probably facilitated by the stepping up campaign in 2015 when Dan and several of us went to DC. We've came back and we've been talking about it, unfortunately ad nauseam. A group of us got together and said, okay, what can we do about this? We've got a lot of people that tend to cycle through Tony's jail, the emergency rooms, EMS, law enforcement. And one of the biggest problems that people have, whether you've got a mental health problem or an intellectual disability or anybody in life, is without stable housing. It doesn't matter what kind of treatments and supports you throw at people. There's a concept in the federal government called Housing First, and if you can get people into stable housing where they don't have to worry where they're going to sleep tonight or when they're going to get their next meal, everything else becomes a little easier. So a group of committed people have been meeting for about two, three years. We formed a nonprofit last fall. It's called the Cedar Valley Housing Corporation, really unique, board of directors of 15 people. And we started putting some meat on the bones of this concept that we have, which is a transitional and/or permanent housing facility for people who frequent the criminal justice system, cannot find housing anywhere. They burn out the worst hotels and motels that we have in the community. Nobody will serve them, so they're under bridges, they're frequenting the ER, they're in back of the squad cars, they're in the emergency rooms, they're in the mental health unit. And unfortunately, they get stuck in the revolving door that used to be in and out of the institutions is now the revolving door in and out of the jails and emergency rooms. So we've got preliminary drawings on the second page through the generosity of Eric Ritlin at Invision Architecture and his staff. We've got a very preliminary budget for the construction of the facility, which is a moving target based on the supply chain. We've got a tentative location for this facility with the county purchasing or the city purchasing the Alstead Langillis property down there next to the food bank and corrections. They're in the process of doing the mitigation, investigations and those type of things. So we wanted to bring this project to your attention. We believe it will save all of us money. We believe that people will get better services. We believe that people can achieve some level of stability, that maybe then we can go to local landlords and say, take a chance on this person because they've worked through this program. There's a model program down in Des Moines that we've been talking to. And although a little different, there's two homeless shelters that have been built in Iowa City that cater to somewhat of the same population. We've got a lot of work to do in terms of staffing, maintenance, those type of things, but we at least wanted to bring this possible project to your attention just as you begin deliberations about the RFA funds questions. I've got a couple of people here, Chris from Mercy One, Mary from County Social Services, who else is here, Sarah from Corrections, she helps play ball, Tony Thompson, can't remember who else is here, but several board members. So more of an update for everybody. We'll keep you posted along the way, but I asked Lynda to give us an opportunity to at least present where we're at for now.
Thank you, Tom.
You had had a handout like this at one time, is this still?
We did, it's been modified a little bit. You're just one of the lucky ones that still has it on your email server someplace, Lynda.
Oh, I just thought, yeah. It's like splashy, gets your attention.
When I look for stuff, I can't find it, so.
Well, I didn't want to do it if it was inaccurate, but I just liked to make sure everybody had it. Okay.
Any questions? Hearing none, thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Craig.
Thanks very much.
Moving on to receive project updates from department heads and elected officials. Morning, Kathy.
The man of the first.
Oh, good morning.
I'm switching it up. No, I stole Kathy's spot. This past Sunday, we had our employee cookout event at Hickory Hills and we had a great turnout from staff and their families, so just wanted to highlight that for you all today. I do have a couple of thank yous I want to extend. First, thank you to the elected officials and department heads who donated funds to support this event for their employees. Thank you to staff and departments who contributed towards gift baskets, bake sale items, or paying to wear jeans during the week. All of those funding or items went to support this event. A huge thank you to Conservation for working with us to finding a location to hold the event, as well as to the workers who provided and donated their time to ensure that families and staff could kayak or canoe. Thank you to the board for their support to hold an event and appreciation for employees. I think it was really well received. And lastly, on behalf of the county, I want to extend my utmost gratitude to the committee and applaud their work in making the employee cookout a success. Your efforts in planning this event attracted a great deal of attention and praise. So as I call each of your names, which they're all in red, and some are out in the hall because we have a really big group here today, but as I call each of your names from the committee, please stand up and stay standing so you can be recognized. Michelle Clark of the Assessors Office, come on in. Mike Hendrickson of Conservation, don't know if he's here. There he is, all right. Not the usual green and red today. Cindy Hernandez of the Treasurer's Office, Victoria Jasper of the Assessors Office, Anna Knapp of HR, Jody Rutledge of Conservation, come on in. Rita Schmidt, our Treasurer, Corey Timm of IT, Grant Beeter, our Auditor, Cheryl Walter of the Auditor's Office, Kayla Swanziger of the Board Office. This was our committee and a big round of applause. A lot of time, a lot of efforts were put into this committee. We started back in May and there were days that I thought, there's no way we're pulling this off. But it was a really magical moment to spend these last few months with all of you in support of all of the Blackhawk County employees and their families to have a really great event. And I just appreciate everybody's support in this, so thank you again.
Oh, yeah.
Grant?
Yes.
Can we get a picture right now?
Sure, can we get a picture? Maybe we can have it with the board. How about everybody just come up quick? If anybody wants to.
We'll get out of the way.
Grant? You got your phone?
Do you all want to stand up?
Yeah, we don't need to be. Everybody did it all. Are we all going to fit in here? Board members, do you want to come in? Sorry. Okay. All right. Can you fit all in?
It is.
There's a hole right there.
Yes.
I thought, well, I'm wearing red. So we received a lot of, you know, follow-up comments, a lot of praise and just compliments on the event. Several of you showed up today, or showed up on Sunday, so thank you for participating. And I've had some interest in possibly, you know, how can we do something like this more or something different? So we're going to have some follow-up meetings as to look to other ways that we can show employee appreciation. Do you guys have anything for me at all regarding this event at all?
It was just really well done and it was great to see so many employees out there and enjoying themselves with their families.
And I know a lot of people were talking about doing it again next year already, so the committee can be at least excited and appreciated. I think you did a great job.
Well, thank you, yep. I think one of the things, you know, we'll have to kind of, we hadn't done one of these, I think the last time was 15 years ago out at Hickory Hills. You know, one of the, we had a lot of donations this year, which was a huge to offset the cost to cater the food. That's one thing I'd like to explore with the board, seeing other counties and cities that, how they're able to have a policy to fund employee recognition events. One thing I've seen counties and cities do is the annual service awards. So we have those service awards every month where we recognize staff for 20 or more years of service. Maybe we could look at possibly evolving that into something like an annual event like this or a breakfast or a catered lunch, so even during the workday. I know sometimes Sundays and Saturdays, that's the last thing somebody wants to do is spend their days off at a work event, but I think it went off really well. So thank you, everyone, for your support.
Thank you.
Did you, how did it end? Did you have enough funding or?
We came pretty close, yep. So, yep, but we had some actually pretty generous donations, so from some of the leadership, so.
Okay, we needed to, we needed to look at that, too. I know you'd hoped there had been an overage, it'd carry over to another event, but it also needed to address if it wasn't enough, so.
Sure, yep. And, you know, the big piece is the food catering that we really wanted to make sure that staff came and their families to have that meal, so. But we'll have some lessons learned for next year and ideas as well, so thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy?
Good morning, Board, Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer. The only thing I wanted to tell you about this morning is that on October 7th, we are having our annual full-day hour fall safety meeting. That will be first thing, or all days, October 7th, which is a Friday. I would invite one of you or several of you to come and speak to our secondary road staff. They always appreciate hearing from you. I think it's a, you send a nice message to them. So I will also send you an email reminder if you'd like to come and address them. Please let me know and we'd sure love to have you. That's all I got today, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other department heads or elected officials? Seeing none, moving on to consent agenda by resolution? Minutes approved, sorry, thanks.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda by resolution?
All moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none, this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Little.
He's muted. You're muted, Tom.
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is proclamations, this is a resolution to proclaim the second week of October as Earth Science Week. Mr. Beeter.
Sherman's here, too.
I believe Sherman is here.
Yeah, sorry, Sherman, I didn't see you back there.
Standing room only.
Standing room only, anyway. Well, good morning.
Good morning.
And as usual, a little bit of a selfie for everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Sherman.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for the large font.
Well, actually, it was for me, but that's all. My bifocals and I have an arrangement, the bigger the font, the happier we are. Well, Mr. Chairman and the Board of Supervisors, on behalf of those of us who work in the various fields of the Earth Science, we appreciate this proclamation which sets aside the week of October 3rd to 8th as Earth Science Week. Earth Science Week is a combined effort on the part of many agencies and organizations to make the public aware of the Earth Sciences and all aspects of society. Issues, problems, interests and concerns ranging from agriculture and land management to energy sources, climate concerns, source water for domestic and industrial uses, minerals and raw materials for technology in all phases of construction, education, and even the exploration of space are part of this effort. As you well know, Blackhawk County is actively involved in the Earth Sciences through the WMAs, the Watershed Management Authorities, road construction and maintenance, land use concerns, water issues, and the list goes on. And as part of the Earth Science Week, you and the public are encouraged to attend Sunday at the Quarry Program at the BMC Aggregates Raymond Quarry Facility just east of Raymond, Iowa on October the 2nd, Sunday from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM for programs and activities provided by agencies and other organizations to explore this year's theme, our resourceful earth. So we cordially invite you to out there across the state over here. Several organizations will be presenting information and programs about our resources over here. And again, thank you so very much for the proclamation for Earth Science Week.
Thank you, Sherman.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions? Please let us know. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Let me read it?
Yep, please, Kathy.
Whereas the Earth Sciences are fundamental to understanding our natural resources, whereas the Earth Sciences provide insight into the processes which have and continue to shape the Earth's resources, whereas the Earth Sciences help us to utilize and manage our Earth resources, whereas the Earth Sciences provide us with technology to better understand how to explore and wisely extract resources for our society, whereas the Earth Sciences offer insight into a wide range of resources from in and on our Earth to the atmosphere that surrounds us, whereas the Earth Sciences open windows to better understand our resourceful Earth. Therefore, we proclaim the second week in October as Earth Science Week.
Thank you, Mr. Beeter.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved in second, this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Tralka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Thank you, Sherman.
Thank you very much. Hope to see everybody on October the 2nd.
Moving on to other businesses, the motion to receive and place on file the arterial opinion certificate for fiscal year 22 of Blackhawk County Insurance Healthcare Plan as submitted by Insurance Strategies Holding LLC.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion on this item? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next is discussion, burning within the Blackhawk County. Name and address, please, sir.
Mike Devine, 4008 Williamson Avenue, Cedar Falls, Iowa 50613. I'm a little nervous up here, you don't mind if I smoke, do you? Of course not. Says out on the building, no smoking. All the buildings, buildings you can't smoke, and that's for a reason, because smoking is poisonous. It's been determined that by the corpse, it's been determined that you can't smoke in school, you can't smoke in the restaurants and stuff like that. And cities have banned burning, not because of the fire necessarily, but because of the smoke that it creates. And this is which leads me to my issue. My property is right on the Cedar Falls, Cedar Falls line, and an inch or a foot or whatever over that is county. So I'm in the city, we have a burn ban there, I can't burn and all that type of stuff. However, what happened was I came home one day and there was smoke drifting through our neighborhood. And at first I thought my house is on fire, so I run around it, and God, my house isn't on fire. And it was drifting out through our neighborhood, so I went, kind of see it drifting that way, so went back that way and saw where the smoke was coming from, and lo and behold, it was in the county. So it was 10 foot over the county line and 10 foot from my deal, and there was a smoke, smoke building, and you could see the smoke, it was drifting like a fog. So I knew who the proper owner was, the business owner, I called him, they said, all right, we'll send somebody out or something. So 15 minutes later, nobody came, so I chickened out and had my wife call. They called the same people, they said they'd come out, nobody came out, 15 minutes. So then I said, I called Cedar Falls Fire, and they're the police and the fire together. So a police car came out, looked at the fire, smoking real bad, and he starts getting into his turnout gear and stuff like that. I said, hey, cool, we're going to get this taken care of. And so then another cop came out, he said, yeah, we can put this out. So they called, it wasn't a fire engine, but it was like the brush fire thing, it was the, excuse me. So they came out, were just about ready to put it out, when the business owner comes flying out in his truck and goes, what's going on here? You know, kind of a gruff guy, but, and so the cops said, hey, we got this fire here, you know, we'd like to put it out, you get smoke in the whole neighborhood. And he commenced to tell us that he's legal, he's out in the county, he can do it every once, he can burn smoke, who cares? He's legal. Cops, you can't do anything about it, fire, you can't do anything about it. And goes, and who are you? I go, oh, well, my name is Mike and I represent kind of our neighborhood that's getting smoked out. And he goes, you're trespassing, get off my land. And I'm going Jeepers, man. So I said, well, your smoke's trespassing on my land, get your smoke off my land, you know, I was kind of fighting fire with fire a little bit because he upset me a little bit. And so the cops then came in and started talking to him, he was standing in his pickup. So I kind of, I was with the cops, I thought I was kind of safe, so told him to get off, and so I kind of backed into the periphery. And they were saying, he was telling the cops, and they were having a discussion, that nobody could do anything because he was legal or whatever in the county. So, and he looks at me and says, I told you, get off my land or I'm going to have you arrested for trespassing. Oh, geez, man, all right, backing off. So I kept walking along, he fingered me. I go, come on, dude. It really, it flicked me the bird. And right there in front, so if nobody believes me, it's on the officer's camera. So I went back on my property, everything settled down, everybody left, and the cops came over and said, hey, Mike, sorry, but I can't do anything about the smoke. And oh, by the way, if you come on his property again, you're going to get arrested for trespassing. Oh, geez, what else could go wrong? This owner, this is the second time that smoke has happened. The first time it was smoking, hey, I walked over there and there was a couple of employees, and I didn't know their names, but hey, we're smoking, and they said, yeah, you are, so they put the fire out. I go, hey, cool, you guys are all right. Second time, not so much. So this owner's failure to mitigate the smoke issue with us and flaunting his right to burn because he was in the county is what precipitated this. This presentation, do you, that want to come up with and prevent this smoke issue in the future? We tried diplomatic diplomacy and stuff, talking to him, I don't want to talk to him again. He made it clear that what his stance was and he didn't care, and so the talking is long gone. So did a little research, my wife and I did, and can I approach?
Thank you. First thing we did, my wife did, I don't know why she went to the DNR, but she pulled up a DNR website, and got some information from them. And what happened was their biggest thing, their first thing on the website was the definition of smoke and how poisonous it was. And we all know, you know, we're not, when we were born yesterday, smoking has been banned everywhere and all that type of stuff. So this is the DOT on their website, we printed it off, open burning. I should have brought a poster that shows the effects of lungs and stuff. We can go to the second page on the top, oops, I go to mine, second page on the top, you know, it talks about leaf burning and the pollutions with it, it talks about that type of stuff. And then it says, what's in leaf smoke, carbon monoxide, food can be dangerous for young children, smokers and elderly. And here's the thing I want to do, particulate matter refers to the microscopic soot particles. So, and it says, too small to be seen within vigil under the unaided eye, these particles are the thickness of a red blood cell, and they can become embedded in your lung tissue. And what happens is that's the soot that's too small to be seen microscopically. The smoke, of course, there's enough soot that you can see it, but when it dispenses out and you can smell it, that's according to the DOT, that's your, that's the soot and the poisons and everything else that goes with it. It's funny, they had, they said it bends, bends a prilene with, is a poison in that, and anybody that's in the Marine Corps, I think Dan and Tom Little, you always see the advertisements for Camp Lejeune, drinking the water, the poison, all the big lawsuits that are going with that, I don't know if you've seen it, but unfortunately, I was in Camp Lejeune and we drank the water, and I didn't drink the Kool-Aid, the water, and it had benzene in it, and so I don't, you know, I don't have cancer or miscarriage and all that other stuff, so I'm not getting in on the million dollar settlement, but I do have, I did drink the benzene, I'm on the VA healthcare system now, and it's kind of a cumulative thing, so I've been exposed to the benzene. But anyway, the particulate matters, that's all in there on the first page, that type of thing. And on the second page there, the last paragraph, it talks about poisons, the DNR, and we know it's poison and that type of stuff, but it's just, if you want paperwork, it's out there and you can do any website with smoke, and it's essentially going to tell you that it is indeed a poison. After that, if you go back to the front page of this DNR, the DNR pamphlet, it says regulations and instructions down here, and the first bullet point, it says, open Iowa's open burning rules. And so you click on that, and that comes up to this page. After that, Iowa Administrative Code, emission standards for contaminants, open burning. And this is, I don't know why I was on the DNR website, but anyway, so you go down, it goes down halfway down B, trees and trimmings, and it says, the fourth line down, actually the end of the third, it says, burning conduct, burning is conducted only when the weather conditions are favorable with respect to surrounding property. So the wind was blowing, so the waiver, weather, the weather was not a favorable condition. And it goes, and wait, there's more, that's what it'll add. And the burning site is limited to areas at least one quarter of a mile from any inhabited building. So this is the Iowa Administrative Code, I don't know who enforces it, I don't know where, I found it on the DNR website, I don't know that much about it. So there's two stipulations, one, you got to be a quarter of a mile away, and two, at least a quarter, and two, the wind has to be favorable. And you know how the winds switch, when you're in a campfire and the smoke's blowing away, hey, cool, you roast some marshmallows, all of a sudden the wind changes, it's blowing your face, so you move around. So the quarter of a mile is a little suspect, especially with the wind, with those two things. So two things only when the weather conditions are, and it's got to be at least a quarter of a mile away. Being this is on the DNR website, I asked myself, why doesn't the DNR, the DNR enforce this? And the reason was, we called, I think musketeen, my wife called somewhere where the corporate headquarters, and they said they really don't do that type of enforcement, they're with parks and recreation and licensing and fishing and hunting and that type of thing. So there wasn't, this wasn't their Bailey work, they work eight to five, no weekends, and so there weren't really an enforcement issue with this. So, okay, so we want one more, one more thing. And on the next page, we looked at burning bans in other, in other counties, and Polk County popped up. And Polk County says, the definitions, it says 5.7, open burning is prohibited. So it said, and it should be unlawful any person to open burn, print open burning within Polk County. So it's pretty, pretty specific there, I mean, you can't burn in Polk County. So it goes down a couple of things, it talks about the city, and then the second paragraph, it talks about the county in general. So prohibited burning as a reference, that Polk County does not allow burning in their county. So I'm just throwing that out, that we kind of tried to do some due diligence, that Polk County understands it, sure, they've got, what is it, West Des Moines, they've got Urbandale, Winter Heights and all the kind of affluent areas, but if they do that to take care of their affluent people, what about us common folk, if you will, out here in Blackhawk County? You know, we don't.
Mike, what are you actually asking for then today from the board?
Where am I, what?
Asking from the board today? I mean, we've had presentations. I understand where you're coming from with all that. I've read it. Um, we've had presentations over there. But what are you, what are you asking for today?
Thank you. I'm on that right now. Action items. I got this much more paper to do. So we know the definition of smoke, which is poison from the DNR. We know that because of the smoking ban anyway. We know there's Iowa administrative code out there that for their restrictions. And there's the city bans and the Polk County bans. So here's my, here's my final deal. A good thing to do, we got good, better and best. Good is to incorporate that quarter mile ban and the wind favorable conditions. It's in the Iowa code. And, you know, have that a distance, incorporate that into Black Hawk County code somehow so that we as a county can enforce that. That's good. Better, we know how the wind blows. We know how smoke goes. Just because you don't see the smoke, you can still smell it and all that stuff. Better would be to update that requirement to a half mile. That makes sense as long as we hopefully are going to incorporate this. You know, let's go and do it right and do a half mile on the same with that burning code. And the best thing is to, Polk County, Polk County's already set a precedence ban in the whole county. So that's, you know, they had a precedent set. I don't think they're, you know, that's the best, of course. You can't always get what you want. But I understand that we're not Polk County. But so we've got good, just with existing ordinance that's on the books, incorporate into it. Better is go for the half mile instead of the quarter. And the best is the deal. So that's my request to you to better protect your citizens of Black Hawk County, which I'm one, from the poisons of irresponsible smoke.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions?
No, thank you, Mike. It looks like Polk County did this as, as a public health regulation. So that, and those always, those initiate with the Board of Health. On the Board of Health will pass a public health regulation. Then the boards do write, just kind of enact it. And that gives a little bit more enforceability than just a board ordinance because it would cover both unincorporated and incorporated parts of the county. So, so I recommend making the same presentation to the Board of Health. And, and that's where the public health regulation process would start at.
Mike, what was he burning again?
Trees and wood, boards. And it was, it was root balls also, stake, whole root balls. I think he was transferring it from one of his other locations, dumping it out there. And when it gets, you know, it's kind of in a pit. So he's got water, so stuff is wet. And we know that wet leaves, smoke, wet anything smokes. And that's what it was. And it was just his, he didn't even want to talk about it. He just wanted to berate us and wanted to throw me in jail. So.
You mentioned that was the second time. Was it in the same place, same location that the burning was before too?
Only we didn't call anybody out the first time because the two employees there, hey, yep, we see your problem, Mike. No problem, we'll go ahead and take care of it.
Thank you for your presentation.
I want to make sure.
Mike, you want to make a comment?
Yeah, me, you.
The other one here.
I just, I'm sorry to interject. The only thing I might be able to help with this, Mike, and I'll get this for you. Um, we get calls like this, and I'm Mike Hendrickson, the director of Black Hawk County Conservation. Sorry. We get calls about different environmental issues periodically. The DNR's Environmental Protection Office is in Manchester. I don't have that office number with me, but I can get that for you. I have gotten a good response. If they're not responding to you, I would help you along those lines. And they, because I do call there somewhat regularly sometimes. I think that is step number one, but I just, sorry to interject. I just thought if that would help, I would give you that.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Can I get your phone number?
Kathy?
Okay. Can I make a statement?
Thank you.
Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. And I'm speaking as the weed commissioner here. And I should probably invite Griffin to, he is now the official weed commissioner, but he's only been here several weeks. So every spring of the year, as you know, the weed commissioner, the code of Iowa says that the county board of supervisors should tell their residents to take care of the naxus weeds that will be cropping up in the ditches, cropping up in, on land. And to control it, fire is used to control many of those weeds. And that is why a lot of the ditches are burned out in the county. So I would say that that is a common method of taking care of the weeds or soon to be weeds. I, of course, I am very sympathetic to what Mr. Devine has to say. I would like to work with him. I just wanted to make sure that you are all aware of that, that that is a very common way of taking care of the weeds. Other counties have permits that are required for burning. So I would, perhaps that is something that we should be looking at if we go forward in any type of decision.
Thank you, Kathy.
And then how does that work with Kathy? Would that work with your department? How would that work, something like that? They do.
Well, I am not an expert at that. I don't know what, how other counties have applied the permits or who issues the permits. In the past, we haven't had anything to do with homeowners or landowners burning ditches. We just know that that's a common way of combating weeds. But we, I can certainly look into that. Maybe conservation departments are more in tune with that. I don't know all the specifics.
Okay, thank you. That's. Follow up to Chris. I understand your thing with Polk County and not going that way. And maybe even, Mike, if you can answer out this, what is the Iowa administrative code? And how can I apply that to that, that thing I quoted, that law that I quoted?
Short answer is the administrative code is a body of law we call agency law. It's not legislatively enacted. However, it has to be followed and it typically is enforced. I would have to see, and by see, I mean, look further into this chapter 23 to see if there's any specific enforcement provisions with regard to that. I may have to go further into title 567 as well on that. So it takes some research to determine. But if there's no other determination as to enforcement, this very well could be enforced by county law enforcement at this time without any further enactment of county ordinance. Now, the Polk County ordinance, just from reading what your handout was, definitely goes a lot farther. And it would, you know, doing something like a county ordinance, whether it be a health regulation or a, or a board of supervisors enacted ordinance, there'd be a lot of different stakeholders who'd have to be, you know, have to have their input on that. The way I see it, based upon what you provided here, the, the fire that was burning. Yeah. Well, the fire that was burning there was not legal. That's the first thing. Secondly, I'm not sure that the, that since the Cedar Falls city police did not have jurisdiction outside of the city limits, Lisa, that's my understanding. I'm not sure that they would have been the ones to enforce trespassing on.
Fire department too. So they've got, they've got the bigger department, I mean, the bigger jurisdiction.
That's true. But the, the question is what, what's their reach for law enforcement purposes? And I'd have to look into that. But it, but in any event, the, the way I see it, the administrative code is enforceable. Now, I like the idea of contacting, contacting the DNRs Mr. Hendrickson recommended because at least then you begin a paper trail on that at the state level.
We did indeed. That's who my wife called is Manchester. And, and that's, she direct, or he, that person directed us to there and said, that's the one that said that the enforcement capability is somewhat limited. And so that, you know, with the staffing and stuff like that. So, is Tony still here? So if, what you said, so if I get a fire out there within 10 feet of my yard, I can call Tony and have a sheriff come out and do that at this point?
On a most technical level, I think that law is clear enough that it can be enforced by county law enforcement. Having said that, there's practical considerations that will come into play here. But, but if it was burning 10 feet from the property line, as I believe I heard you say.
It is.
And with weather conditions being unfavorable, there'd certainly be a case for a conversation to say, hey, you shouldn't be doing this. And why don't we put this off till another time in another place?
Your name was Mike.
Mike Trynen.
Lot of Mikes.
Yep. Mike, Mike, Mike. Anything else? Thank you, Mike. Mike, Mike. Moving on to discussion for NAF Care contract amendment. Morning, Mr. Sheriff.
Good morning. Give me just a minute while I assault one of your participants here. Mike and I have got a history. No, as I indicated to you a few weeks ago, during Department Head elected official time, we were notified by one of our contract vendors that mid-contract, and we're about halfway through this contract amendment with NAF Care for medical and mental health services provisions in the jail, that they are in need of a contract amendment again to help mitigate the absorbent expenses that they are experiencing with providing contract services in the jail. To refresh and to inform everyone, we currently have budgeted $1,384,834 for this year's budget. Our contract with NAF Care is at $1,381,784.04. That contract extends through 2025. So we're right in the middle of that contract. The proposal that was originally projected and the proposal that I brought to you at the time amounted to about a 37.8% increase. So as I indicated during that board of supervisors meeting, I went back and started doing my due diligence, working with NAF Care. We had a Zoom meeting with their corporate folks. I reached out to Chris Faraday from PDCM Insurance. I reached out to the corporate executives from both Allen and Covenant or now Mercy One and Unity Point Hospitals to determine both what is the landscape for mental and medical health care right now? And are these reasonable expenses? And as it pertains to this particular contract, does it make sense? I also reached out to several sheriff's offices that have contracted services in this arena. And I provided you with those, with those figures in the weeks between. Pursuant to the Zoom meeting that I had with corporate NAF Care folks out of Birmingham, they produced four additional options at my request, which included a five-year pricing revision to try and help spread the hurt, if you will, so that we could maybe mitigate this over a longer period of time and reduce further the, the cost to the county. And what actually it ended up doing was providing more stability. It didn't really change the numbers dramatically. We went from 37.8% down to 26% with a negotiated reduction in the cost of living allowance. But the numbers are pretty hard when it comes to what they're asking for, simply because they're not asking for a lot of fat. They're asking for some bodies. But rather than me try and explain their numbers and their metrics, what I have done is I've asked and invited the CEO of the company to come fly up and join us today so that he can kind of walk you through that methodology. So I'm going to introduce to you Bradley McLean, the CEO of NAF Care.
Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to address you. I know we have a big ask and I have a mountain to climb. So I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to, to climb it. So I'm Brad McLean. I'm the CEO of NAF Care. I've been, I've been at NAF Care about six years and the CEO role for three years. We're, we're a family company. My father started NAF Care 32 years ago. He was running a family drugstore, started filling prescriptions for a jail in Georgia, learned a lot about the needs of the incarcerated community, a very high risk, high needs patient population. Decided he could build a better company to provide care and built NAF Care and into a company that is on track to be the second largest correctional healthcare company in the country. We really value our partnership with Black Hawk County. As I said, we've been in business 32 years. We've been your healthcare provider for over 20 years. So you've been with us for much of our history. So I feel a strong sense of loyalty to this county and a desire to continue the partnership and provide, provide services. We've done a lot of things to improve the healthcare and we've taken on a lot of additional burdens at no additional cost over the past couple of years. One of the issues that we struggled with going back a few years was when we started this contract and for many years, the corrections officers were doing the intake screens. So when people came into the jail, an officer would ask questions about what are your medical needs? And then that would come to us. The National Commission on Correctional Healthcare, NCCHC, allows that. A lot of small jails do that. But that's a huge burden to put on an officer. It is so superior to, to have a nurse provide that. And that, in fact, that is our model. And we insist on that at all of our contracts. We won't take a contract unless we have a nurse who takes on that, that intake screening. We have what we call a proactive care model where we really strive to do everything we can as soon as that patient comes into the jail, to understand what their needs are, to quickly intervene, to meet their needs. Don't wait for them to put in a sick call or get sick or have a problem. Identify their needs and address them upfront. That is the, the whole mission and philosophy of our company. So we took on that intake screening at, at, with no additional resources or money just because it needed to be done. We partnered with, with Sheriff Thompson and his team. And that has just been a huge improvement in the care. We also have added some improvements to our system. One thing we created a few years ago is a 24/7 telehealth service. We call Stack Care. We have 40 nurse practitioners, medical and psychiatric nurse practitioners that work around the clock that are always available to our team. And so anytime, day or night, 24/7, through an email of, an alert through our electronic health record software system that we designed in-house and, and offer to you, or a phone call, you're booking nurses. The nurses who are on site have a medical provider. And we added another kind of add-on service where there's a service called Sure Scripts, where if I have your name and your zip code, and not all of our patients have a zip code unfortunately, but most do. And with that information, we're able to quickly confirm through over 97% of the, the network of pharmacies in our country, exactly what medication you're taking. So you come into the jail, we do a robust assessment of your medical and mental health needs. We figure out exactly what medications you're on. We start those medications quickly through a 24/7 nurse practitioner that's always available. Through our Stack Care service, you don't pay a penny for that. We've just, we've just offered that to you as a value add. Last year, there were over 4,600 patient encounters through that nurse practitioner team, drug orders, progress notes, lab sign-offs, evaluations and treatments. That's a tremendous benefit to, to your, your patients in the, in the jail. Over the past few years, since the pandemic hit, we, we have just seen costs skyrocket. I know, you know, costs are going up. Costs are going up for, for the county and in your personal lives. And in, in our field of correctional healthcare, costs are really going up. And for years, I was really proud that when I bid on a project and took on a project, and I said, I never go back and ask for more money. I was able to say that for many, many years. I obviously cannot say that now. You know, our costs are, are going up to the point that we are losing money on the contract. And so we're at a place where we have to ask for more. We're also at a place where we need to give our staff wage increases. And that's, that's tough to do when we're, when we're losing money. And, you know, we need a budget for that. And we'd like to add some staff and believe that, that we need some additional nurses. It's a kind of breaking down our ask. One of the things we're asking for is additional 2.1 nurses. Right now, we have one nurse on night shift. Now, that used to work better in an environment where it's easier to find nurses. But when we only have one nurse on night shift, if something happens and that nurse calls out, we often really scramble. And you know, we've got people who are stepping up and working double shifts to make sure there's someone in the building at night. It's really not sustainable. We need two nurses. If we have an additional RN on the night shift, the model that we're talking about, you'd have an RN and an LPN on day, an RN and an LPN at night, you'd always have an RN in the building. And an RN can do even more to provide for care, to respond to their needs, and in that intake screening, the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare, NCCHC, requires you do a history and physical examination within 14 days, and RN has to do that. We like to do that upfront. That's the ideal model. The more information we get as soon as you come in the door, the better we are to care for your patient population. So if we can have that additional nursing, then we're able to really give you our full kind of, we call our proactive care model, doing everything we can upfront. I know that's a big ask, but it's going to be a hugely beneficial addition to the healthcare that we offer in the jail. That's 32,700 of our ask. That's the biggest chunk of our ask is that additional nursing. We're asking 30, this is a month, these are monthly numbers, so per month. Additional wages, we're asking for 3,100, a budget to pay our staff more. Insurance costs are going up, and we're also, we've restructured our insurance where we could offer a little bit more insurance coverage, if that was helpful to you. And 8,333 of our ask is insurance. Then we've asked for just a general cost of living increase of 3,454. Yeah, the biggest driver of that bucket really is medication costs. We're at full risk for medication costs under your contract. The biggest driver of our needs in the Black Hawk County Jail is caring for your patient population with serious mental illness. It's the biggest struggle we have. You're really fortunate that you don't have the kind of problems with substance use. You have those problems, but not like Ohio, not like Washington State. God help you that you never have the kind of opioid epidemic that the rest of, a lot of the rest of the country is struggling with. The biggest driver of our needs is mental health. Now, I was just in the jail with our team, and we keep a list up on the board of those seriously mentally ill patients that we're watching that are on expensive mental health medications, long-acting injectables. Depending on the variety of medication you're on, it's over $1,000 a shot. But those are medications that really help our patients remain stable, and stable while they're in the jail, and stable when they go out into the community where hopefully they can get care and remain stable. You know, we've been $4,000 or $5,000 a month over our pharmacy costs just because of the need to care for those, the mental health patients. And we always do what's right. It doesn't matter if we're losing money. We're just, we always spend the money that caring for our patients demands. In terms of kind of a comparative sense, you're paying for $15.14 per inmate per day under your current contract. You're getting more than that because we're subsidizing you, we're losing money, because there's more care that's needed. What we're asking for is, would be $21.40 per inmate per day. I know that's a big increase, but it is really within range and on kind of the low range still of what it costs across our network of contracts across the country. To give you a specific example, we just bid on and won the RFP and took over Polk County, Iowa, their contract, and their contract is structured a little different in that they bear the responsibility for all the off-site and pharmacy. But when you add in their budget and our budget, they're at 2162 per inmate per day. We're asking for 2140, so we're a little under Polk on a per inmate per day basis, which to me shows that, although we've got a big incremental ask, that it's a fair ask and it's within reason of kind of where the market has gone. I know that, you know, your choices really are either to work with us, to add what we need, or put out an RFP. If you want to put out an RFP, I completely understand that that's a choice you have with such a big ask. I would hope that if you do put out an RFP, that you emphasize quality and put patient care first, because you can find a company that'll come in and give you a cheap program. But you know, one of the extraordinary things that we can be proud of here, I have to knock on wood, we haven't had a lawsuit in over three years. That's almost, that's almost unheard of in correctional healthcare, that you can provide this service and have such low liability. And the reality is, the work that we do, any decision that a nurse makes, any patient that you lose can be a $10 million, or a $20 million, or a $30 million lawsuit. That's my pitch. I'm happy to ask questions. I appreciate you considering the request.
I've got one question. You talked about some of the increases are going to go for salary increases. What are they? Salary increases?
So we haven't, I haven't precisely figured out, you know, how we're going to allocate that budget. Our senior vice president over this jail is with me, but what we really did is just look at the contract we just won at Polk County and the nursing rates at Polk, and the nursing rates that we're paying now at your facility. And we're several dollars an hour under where I'd like to be as far as our budget. So you know, we'd like to have a budget to be able to pay significantly higher nursing rates.
But you don't know what that is, what the increase is going to be for the employees?
Right now, I wouldn't want to say. I'd kind of create expectations that could be dangerous. We always look at, you know, the performance of our nurses and how much experience they have, and it's, you know, it's kind of a case-by-case. We're always recruiting and looking to add more nurses. If I give you a number, I got to pay everybody exactly that number I give you, so can't give you a number right now, but I could take that back and consider if we could give a more fulsome answer.
Another question is, a lot of facilities, hospitals, health department are having trouble hiring RNs. You don't expect to have any problem hiring 2.5 RNs or whatever?
It is a struggle. I expect to have, it will be a challenge, but I'm confident in our ability to find the nurses. And in fact, we, as hard as RNs are, as hard as it is to find RNs, LPNs are even harder to find. And in fact, we've, where we can't find an LPN, we'll fill shifts with RNs and just eat that incremental cost. But this kind of additional RN staffing that we've proposed is less of a challenge to find than the LPNs, but it will be, it will be a challenge to find these staff. I'm confident we can do it. It's what we do. It's a question of how long it takes to get them on board. But you know, we used to post positions and people applied, and it was a great world. And now, we can't post a position and expect anyone to respond. We have to source every position. We're picking up the phone and calling and emailing and reaching out and begging people to come work for us. It's the only way that we can fill positions today.
Dan?
It looks like the, when we signed this contract was in July of 2020.
Yes.
And we're not even two and a half years into this contract. It's a five-year contract that expires June 30 of 2025. We are currently paying $1,381,000 per year. With the trajectory you're providing, we could easily be paying double of this in four years.
And the reality is, our, you know, our needs and our costs here are high enough that we proposed, really, I'm trying to break even next year, and then, you know, hopefully over time, get to a point where we're doing a little bit better than breaking even. So you know, I recognize it's a big ask. We are very flexible as far as the duration of this revised contract. It, you know, we discussed different options, whether it's a, you know, a one-year increase or a two, or three, or four, or five. That's really at your discretion, but we're just looking for a contract that gives us the resources we need to continue to provide care, to enhance the care, and to be financially sustainable.
Now, in regard to Iowa code, it appears that you exceed by quite a bit what's required by code?
I would strongly agree with that. You know, we're not the kind of low-cost vendor, we're not the do-the-minimum company. For example, you know, the accreditation we have under the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare, that's not required by state or federal statute, but you know, that is an investment in excellence and making sure that we're following best practices, that we're, and ultimately that we're reducing your liability. From my bias standpoint, every, being passionate about this and what I do every day and spending time with people in jails who need care, you know, every dollar you invest in people in healthcare, in the jail environment, in getting them stable and getting them healthy is several dollars you save in the community if they're put out on the street unstable. So you know, I recognize it's a big ask and a big investment, but I believe it'll pay dividends.
And I would agree. I was going to say wholeheartedly when you say that, and I think because it comes about in just like a 30-day timeframe for us to look at and try to amend or not, I think is difficult. My questions were more related to, you said something about the bulk of increase. You do 12-hour shifts, I believe your staff is 12-hour shifts?
We're actually on eights now, and then we're looking at going to, we're looking at going to 12s. I guess the cat's out of the bag. We hadn't necessarily told the team yet, so you know, change is always hard, but we need the additional nursing, and the concept that we're looking at is an adjustment to 12s with RN, LPN, 12 per day, RN, LPN, 12 per night.
And like I say, I think you yourself mentioned the bulk of the increase is probably that increase of staff from us from a 2.1 to a...
It is. It's, you know, 32,700 per month, so the biggest chunk of what we're asking for by far is that additional investment in nursing.
And I guess my question is how you arrived at that number? I guess why, I mean, obviously you probably considered all types of things, whether it was utilizing part-time people, or calling people, or whatever that could help you assist through some tough times, but how you arrived at that number and not maybe an additional person?
Right. So the, so basically, if you're looking at 12, 12-hour shifts and the weekend coverage of, you know, 12 hours, seven days a week, you end up with 2.1 for an FTE, full-time employee. I'm terrible at math. I can't tell you exactly how that works out, but every time we've done the math, that's how it's worked out. So the 2.1 provides, you know, 12 hours, seven-day-a-week coverage. Did I get that right, David? I always check on my math. Anytime I do math, everyone gets nervous.
And the RN, just because there's more things that they're able to do?
That, that's...
Instead of adding an LPN?
That's correct. And having, having, and right now, we typically only have an LPN in the building at nights. A lot of times, we can't find an LPN, so you have, you have an RN because that's what we're able to fill the night shifts with. But having only one nurse on that, on that third shift is one of those, you know, kind of waking up in the middle of the night worrying about your things, and I don't like that. Having an RN in the building at all times on night, and able, when we do intakes, to provide a lot more upfront of not only doing the, that intake screening, but also a little bit more of a physical examination to really find out more, is just more care upfront and more insurance against someone becoming unstable and having a bad outcome or dying later if there's something we don't catch at the, at the door when they come in.
Thank you.
Any other questions for right now?
I have questions, but not particularly, particularly for Mr. McLean.
Yeah.
I'm available anytime if, you know, if any of you wanted to reach out after this to answer, answer questions. Really appreciate your consideration. Again, I know this is a big ask, and I'm kind of having to do this all over the country these days. I have some contracts that we bid more recently and bid them on today's market, and I don't have a problem, but I've been going around the country asking for revisions to contracts and big raises. No one's told me no yet. Everyone's said yes. I've had other partners step up with, you know, investing more in what we do. I would love for you to say yes. I know it's a big ask, I know dollars are tight for you, but we, this is not just a business, it's a mission for us. We love doing it and would love to continue. Greatly appreciate your consideration.
We're going to be asking taxpayers to pay for this, and somebody whose taxpayers don't even get the care they need, and we're asking them to step up to the plate and pay these kind of costs. I think you need to go back and sharpen your pencil, really.
I, you know, I understand your concern there. For whatever reason, in our country, people have a constitutional right to healthcare in the jail environment, that we've never created a constitutional right to healthcare for people not in jail. That's kind of, that doesn't make sense to me, but that's the way our constitution has been construed, and I hear you that it's a big ask and a hard ask, but every member of, that everyone who comes into the jail needs healthcare, and when we can return them to the community more healthy, that yields a tremendous benefit to your community because almost everyone in that jail is going to be, a small percentage are going to be sentenced and go to prison, but a lot of people flow through that jail. And if we can provide that care in the jail environment, get them more healthy before we release them to the community, I believe it's a tremendous benefit. But I hear you loud and clear on some of the inequities there, and you know, if I were king of the world, I'd change some things, but I'm not.
I just have a question on the timing. This amendment was stated to be effective October 1st, which is relatively soon.
Right.
If we take some time, or I guess working through what we want to do with this, what occurs, I guess in the meantime, with your services in our jail?
We continue providing the services with the staff that we have, and we continue providing excellent services. And frankly, we continue subsidizing Black Hawk County because we're not going to cut corners. We'll, you know, we'll lose money every month, and we'll do the job. You know, we're a company that is big enough and strong enough that we can lose a few dollars on your contract, and I hope I make a couple dollars on some other contracts in the short term, but I can't do that forever. Our contract gives us the ability to terminate for convenience with 90 days. I would never do that to you because you need, if you're going to go out to RFP or look at your options, you need more than 90 days. I would give you the time you need to go through an RFP or a process, but I, you know, we put that date down. We would, we would love to have more staff and resources October 1st. I know this is a hard decision. You need some time. We're here as your partner to give you whatever the timeframe is you need to make the right decision for Black Hawk County.
Well, and in fairness to you, I know we owe that a quick response to, but within what we can do, I guess, as soon as possible, but...
Thanks, thank you. I appreciate it. I know it's a big ask, and you know, we can't always get everything that we ask. We're always willing to compromise where we can. We love working with this county. Thank you.
So really negotiating anything differently, you think this is kind of the best offer, the best you can do?
Yeah, you know, I've, I love you guys. I'm always willing to negotiate a little, but you know, basically the way this conversation went, I came in with a request for an increase in the compensation, and we sat down and talked, you know, we said, you know, we really need a couple of nurses too. So I really think we need that additional staff, just talking to my team. I think that's so critical. I can't, you know, I can't give that ask up. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to keep, you know, keep asking. Some of these other buckets, if I need to come down a little bit more, I'm open to that, but you know, what I did was look at what do I need to just not lose money on this contract? And so I think any more, any more that we're given, we're looking at cutting into, having some financial loss moving forward, just a lesser financial loss than we're experiencing now. So I'm not going to say no. We, you know, we're, if I were just, if we were just business-driven, we'd say, "Wish you well, good luck," you know, no one's going to retire on Black Hawk County, but we're mission-driven. It's a passion for us.
Appreciate that, too, your side of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your consideration. No further questions? I'll let you move on.
Thank you.
Morning. Nate Neff, jail administrator. I just kind of wanted to follow up with a little bit on especially what Dan had asked about what the contract entails or why it's as robust as it is. I'm afraid to give you guys a little more information. I know there's no action being taken today, but just something for you guys to take and deliberate on as you are thinking this over. Some of the medical services that we have, we are lucky enough to have 24/7 coverage, bare bones, that wouldn't necessarily be... bare bones, that wouldn't necessarily be, be a mandatory thing. It's something Tony fought for when he got elected, and it's been a huge benefit for us. Just some of the things we have on that, in addition to the screenings that Brad talked about. Back when I was working the jail as a deputy, we had to do med pass. That's a huge liability on us. The nurses set the meds up. We would take them out. We'd have inmates ask, you know, well, what's this little white one? Or what does this do? And we couldn't answer that. We didn't know that. They'd say, well, I don't wanna take this one, but I'll take that one. So we'd do that, leave a note for the nurse, and the nurse might say, oh, you should never have given this one without that one. So there's a lot of liability that comes in that. So having the nurses there twenty-four seven is a big deal. The screenings that Brad mentioned with the accreditation, that helps our insurance, that helps everything there. Just a couple months ago, we had an inmate go down in a cell. Fortunately, one of my staff members found him within about two minutes, very faint pulse. It was on a weekend evening, where there might not otherwise have been a nurse, called for medical. He got up there. Within a couple minutes of the nurse being there, the gentleman coded. He started CPR. My officer went and got the AED. Actually able to bring him back. Water and fire got there, took him, he coded again, brought him back again. And within a few days, he was back at the jail, healthy as can be. If we don't have medical staff on hand, that, hopefully my staff still pulls it through. But certainly having the nursing staff on hand made that go a lot better for us. Another thing they're able to do is check arrestees upon arrival, twenty-four seven. If somebody comes in that may be too intoxicated, may be injured, may have come from an accident, it's great to have that nurse there to look at them and make sure that there's someone we won't accept for the jail, so there's no risk in that. So a lot of liability is alleviated from that. But one of the big things we get with our NAFcare contract is the mental health. Excuse me here. Just in the last year alone, I had them pull the numbers from September sixteenth of last year to this year. They saw over one thousand five hundred patients in the mental health portion of our clinic. In addition to that, there is an eighty-eight hours of telepsych that was done. We had a little downtime in between staff change there, so that number would have been even higher, had that been that turnover.
What's all involved with that, Nate?
I honestly couldn't tell you. Some of it is just, there's, I know, over fifteen hundred screenings done. Some of them, they'll go down and have a five-minute talk, how are things going, getting your meds, getting those things regulated. Some of them, they'll be down there for a half hour or more, talking through someone with suicidal ideations, working through psychosis, working through any kind of crisis. So it, I mean, it's the full gamut from, hey, how's it going, working on your anxiety or depression, to a full psychotic outbreak that they're working on.
Thank you.
They also dealt with the eighty-seven patients on suicide watch within the jail last year. Again, that's something, we didn't have any successful suicides. We had numerous attempts. And then with eighty-seven people on watches, hopefully that helped curb even more attempts. But even not looking at it, if you look at it humanitarian, that's an important thing. But dollars and cents wise, if one of those people attempts suicide and completes it, I mean, we all know how much that's gonna cost millions upon millions of dollars in a lawsuit later on. So there is that. Right now, NAFcare covers all of our expenses when we send an inmate out for an X-ray, for an MRI, for anything like that, trip to the ER. So even if we take that back out of the contract, those are expenses then. Right now, they're budgeted. In the future, if that's not in a contract, that's something I'm gonna be coming over and saying, well, we had a two thousand dollar MRI we gotta pay for. Now we've got this, we've got that. Back to our mental health team. Right now, we have a great team with medical's a part of it. We've got Sarah, we've got Jess, we've got Black Hawk Grundy, County Social Services, Pathways. They're all working on both mental health and behavioral health, substance abuse. If we take any cog out of that wheel, it kind of falls apart. The continuity of care that starts when they come to jail, they're able to work on discharge plans, they're able to help get people out of jail, they're able to help keep people out of jail. So it's hard to put a number on those costs, but they all work together to do a great thing. And that starts with our medical staff in the jail, along with our own staff and these guys all here. So really, again, I'm not trying to lobby one way or the other, whether, I know you guys are kind of leaning RFP, it sounds like. I know the sheriff's kind of pushing to resign. The way I kind of see it, we have a couple options if we do go to RFP. It's gonna be a very involved RFP to cover all that, or even if it gets pared down. There's still a lot in there. You're still talking, obviously, a million and a half dollars plus. Ideally, we would have a consultant draw that up at a cost of probably ten to fifteen percent, so another hundred, hundred fifty thousand dollars. If NAFcare does exercise their route, it's a ninety-day out. Brad has said they'll give us a little more time than that. But whether it's getting a consultant, or the other option is me trying to muddle my way through it, and I'm gonna have to do quite a bit of research and make sure, 'cause obviously that two million dollar contract, we wanna make sure we get done right. Whether it's get a consultant, whether me do the research, write up the proposal, get the proposal posted out there, screen any vendors that do apply for it, and get the person, the vendor selected. If it's a new vendor, get them on-boarded. To try and get that done in ninety days is just about impossible, even if he gives us an extra month. This isn't a process, process that we want to rush through. I mean, the worst thing we want is to sign on with a bad contractor and not get what we want, trying to compare apples to oranges when we need to get a good RFP to compare apples to apples. So just kind of thinking outside the box, I'm hoping, so we need to work together on this. Something I kind of came up with is possibly signing this amendment with NAFcare that would take us through the end of the fiscal year. But then by signing this amendment or this addendum, say it drops off those additional two years, and that gives us time we can RFP it for something from July first and beyond. Just food for thought there, that we bite the bullet, pay to get us through June thirtieth, but then we're not rushing to get an RFP done. We're not trying to crank something out by Christmas and hope that we get the best with what we have. Again, that's still, that still falls back to the big ask for this year, but it sets us up for the RFP to get what we want going forward. And it may very well end up still being with NAFcare, which would be great. If it's not, then at least we've done our due diligence with the RFP process. The one thing, the amount of companies out there that are gonna bid on us, I think you'll find is pretty small. We like to think we're kind of the big jail, one of the big jails in Iowa. But when you look at the national picture, there's places that do the mom and pop jails that have twenty, thirty, forty beds, and there's places that do two thousand, three thousand, four thousand bed jails. Even though to us, two million dollars is a lot of money, when you start getting into those big corporate contracts, it's really not. So I think the amount of vendors we're gonna attract is probably pretty minimal, so.
When was the last time we RFP'd this service?
It was before I had anything to do with, I run in the jail, so I'm twenty-ten, two thousand ten. So it has been a while.
This may not be fair to ask you too. Are there other NAFcare contracts in Iowa?
I believe Polk County's your only one. Yep, Polk County.
And, and this is just a question, you probably even addressed this. As far as the numbers, the eleven point five five people that are the FTEs that are needed for us, for our services here, to provide your services, is that based on just the jail being full? Numbers at the jail being like a two seventy-two, or is that just whatever the numbers are?
I send them our average daily population every month, which a lot of that's for billing purposes. But I'm sure they take that number into account when you're determining what staff and levels you need.
I just thought when we get to a transitional housing at some point in time and reduce the numbers in a jail.
Yes, when, when Tom takes thirty or forty off my hands for me.
Long as we wanna do optimistic thinking here.
Tom, can I get a guarantee of thirty, forty?
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, okay. If we do, I know we can reach out to you or-
Yeah, you know where to find me.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Tony asked us to come today to support what, and I just wanna know, or want you to know from a mental health perspective and those that are, and I work with the chronic mental health that come in. And so I just wanna say how I think NAFcare has done a great job and kind of morphed into really being an active part in people coming in and trying to screen people early. We know, and all of our mental health people know that, when we can screen people earlier and get them out earlier, and at least get their medication, those kinds of things, that we do a better job. And we and NAFcare have worked extensively with some of our other providers to be able to surround our community members. We know, you guys see, and we all have this list of people we can bring up that we know are chronic folks in our community. And the mental health staff in particular, we, we're doing things like committals, screening people early, trying to get them out of intake and get them into needed services. They do a really great job of being able to help support people getting out into placement. And I think with community providers, I just had several conversations last week with the hospitals trying to manage people in the jail. What the jail's portion is, what it is to support clients at Black Hawk Grundy, Mercy One. They're calling because their people are coming to us. You know, they have people in their hospitals that have, need to come to jail. So I think they're just a vital part, now whether you fund them at whatever cost you want to fund them. I just want you to know in terms of the mental health and the work that Jess and I do, that it's so important to have that mental health capacity within whatever organization. But just that they have done a nice job of being able to, to work with us and looking at medications and not cutting people off historically, previous to NAFcare, and I've been around for a while. They were changing people off of meds, taking people off of meds, not providing what they need, letting people out with no meds, and we've been able to really reduce that. So mental health-wise, with as many people as we have in every high-cost service, I just think it's really vital to look at the jail being an important piece of that. Because they are coming into the jail, they are in our community, and they, they do need some stability, so.
I just echo everything that she said. I'm Jessica. I'm also within the jail. Our mental health department does a great job. We have a lot of folks that come in to the jail that are unmedicated. And they are able to get them seen rather quickly, get those medications on board. So that way, we're able to work on that transition planning to help get them to their next placement and work with wherever they're going in those outside agencies with transitioning them over on those medications and setting up appointments. And mental health in the jail has just, I mean, it's a vital necessity for us to help transition people successfully, to try to keep them from coming back through our doors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think anybody on the board would disagree that mental health isn't important. My concern is we have several departments to consider. We're, in a few months, we're gonna be entering budget discussions. A few months, a few months ago, the sheriff's office came to us and we adjusted wages. Now we have this. Food service costs are going up. Squad car costs are gonna be going up. My question for the board to consider is if we proceed with this proposal as written, what are we willing to give up? What is the engineers department willing to give up? What is public health willing to give up? What is conservation willing to give up? We've got multiple departments to consider. And there's only a certain amount of money we can take from the taxpayers to cover these costs. We talk about additional wages, additional insurance costs. We have those concerns with our very own employees. We don't even know what they're gonna be yet. We're without a finance director. We're at a perfect storm for how we're going to cover these costs. I, for one, I'm, I'm concerned. I definitely don't wanna rush it. I'm supporting an RFP. If the board has to pony up some money for the RFP, I actually have ideas where we can find that money in our budget. But this is a huge ask. As said, and as, with the trajectory, these costs are going to double easily in four years. How do we sustain that?
Could I speak to that mental health issue?
Mike? I think that's up to the board, who, who, who you want to speak on this, on this topic.
We're really talking about services for NAFcare today.
Exactly, and it affects services for NAFcare.
Of a contract is what we're actually discussing.
Exactly, it affects that.
The, the reality is, everybody today that spoke, they had good points, and they're sincere. And the services are good. And, but the reality is, our job as a board is to figure how to pay for this stuff. This is a huge increase. Five months, like it was stated, we're gonna be budgeting again with a larger increase. And somewhere down the line, whether it's next year or the year after, the board's gonna have to make a decision on raising taxes or cutting services. And where we cut those services could be any department. Could be the sheriffs, could be the conservation, could be the engineers, whatever, or raise taxes. So I think we have some very good points that were given out today. And they're doing their job, but it's up to this board. And the previous boards have put us in a good position with the reserve where it's at, but it's not gonna be there forever. That's what I've been saying for months and years. And you're gonna have to make some hard decisions, and if you wanna pay for these services, we're gonna have to raise taxes. And you know, it's tough out there. We talk about the economy. One of the mayors last week was talking about the economy like we were on an island, and none of us paid that. Well, we're all in the same boat. We pay taxes, we pay the high prices at the grocery stores and so forth. And taxes are going up on the people. I mean, they're to a point where they can't afford their taxes. So we've got some hard decisions to make, and it's a reality, folks. The people talking today, they're giving their point of view from the other side. And now it's on our shoulders to decide if we can afford it. And if we decide we have to do it, then we're gonna have to probably look elsewhere on cutting services, something that we had a luxury of not doing over the years. So I think those are some thoughts that we're gonna have to keep in mind. This initial cost, I would imagine, is gonna come out of our reserves. And they're gonna go down, along with in, in insurance costs for the county and everything. So I don't know, it's something to think about. It's a, it's a very tough subject. And I guess it's something that's, this board's gonna have to make the decision.
Again, may I speak?
I think the board-
I mean, I don't care.
Could we ask you questions? First of all, we, Mr. Chair, could I ask?
Sure.
What's your name?
My name's James B. Robison.
And what is your expertise in regard to the topic we're discussing?
I went through it. And I could tell you, and what I was gonna speak on was what could have occurred that would have prevented me from being misdiagnosed and costing the county all that money.
Speak?
Yeah, go for it, James.
I think at the initial stage, like some of the other people had said, maybe another L, RPM, LPM, or maybe someone who is a true, unbiased, you know, trained in mental health in that field, who is totally unbiased, who will listen to persons who are accused of being mentally ill. Mental health professionals across the country, one of the top things that they say to professors, say, you never discount what's being said by a person who is accused of being mentally ill. Because in most cases, what they tell you is more of a truth than the person that's making the accusation. I went through it as a result of the accusation by a judge and a former prosecutor, who neither one had either an undergraduate degree in psychiatry or psychology. Had someone been there and listened to, as I told them, one piece of evidence, like I touched and approached you about before, and listened to me, and followed up when I said I was a whistleblower, they would have found that I was telling the truth. All those months, all that medication, all that staffing, all that could have been avoided, you'd have extra money now. And that's all I'm saying.
So you were charged and convicted of a crime?
No, I wasn't convicted of a crime. That's just, I was, this is what I approached you for about over a year ago. What happened was, I was wrongfully accused of being overheard of having a gun and without bringing a witness forward, or the police officer. I was accused of being mentally ill and told that I needed a mental health evaluation. Even upon listening to this, or, you know, speaking with the psychiatrist in Odell, I tried to explain to this woman within the fifteen, first fifteen minutes of being, arriving there, the circumstances that led me to come in there. She looked at me and told me I was bipolar and manic, and manic depressive. I asked her, she lost her mind.
So you were-
And we proved later on, in a subsequent mental health evaluation hearing here in Black Hawk County, it was not I who was mentally ill. We proved that she, that mental health professional- professional, was mentally ill. Because she said in the hearing, I still have the transcript, she said, I'm not the psychiatrist. But I restore people to justice, I mean, to competency. This is all that I do. Whereas months earlier, she had told a judge that I was mentally ill because I wouldn't take five different types of medication, and that I wouldn't be competent unless I took the medication. And because of the fact that I wouldn't do it, she in turn, or Judge Cole in turn, ordered involuntary medication, which at that point, I was held down and forcibly injected with five different types of psychiatric drugs.
I think the board should move on to item 10.
Yep. Thank you for that report, James.
All right.
Appreciate it. Any reports or information from the board?
I was going to ask, Mike, I should have done it during project updates, if there was anything, any ARPA updates from last week? Or anything that's changed?
No, I believe I communicated to the board, I've been engaged in trial prep virtually, well, entirely all of the last couple of weeks, with the exception of addressing this, this NAFCARE issue somewhat. And just what, what has been arranged on the ARPA front, and I believe I communicated this to the board, was a, I'm going to be having a, and potentially be one other committee member will be having a meeting with Tom Calico via telephone at some point next week. I believe it's on Wednesday. I believe there is another ARPA committee meeting next week, and I believe that is on Tuesday.
And then they're planned to be here the 4th.
And that's after...
They are planning to be here on October, I believe it's the 4th.
Fourth, yep.
Yeah. I just wondered, because we had those two projects that said exploration, if more exploration had been done and completed.
And, and I, I can't, I can't tell you that I've seen anything since, and I don't believe I've seen any email come through.
That, yeah, I'm sure they would. Thank you.
Yep.
Tomorrow morning at 6:30, our 28th flight will be taken off from the Waterloo Airport and returning at 9:30 tomorrow night. Invite anyone interested in honoring veterans to stop out and welcome them home or tell them goodbye while they're gone. And when they come back at 9:30, welcome them back home. Be 92 vets, I believe, on the flight, full flight, 165 passengers. With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Canvas.
Canvas.
Oh, that's right. Forgot. She's been waiting back here since about 9:30, I think, if not earlier. We don't need a whole lot of people to do that.
That's probably going to be...
Do you have enough to do the canvas without me?
I think so. I was going to say, this was the biggest selection, but I didn't know.
This has been, thank you. This has been, well, I'll explain it some other time. Same excuse.
Does she think it's a closed session? Everybody takes off, yeah. How to do it.
Looked like such a short agenda.
Looked like what?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Super. Which do you want?
Oh, it doesn't matter.
Oh, I'll give you decent.
About 15 minutes.
Yeah.
All right.
I was going to say Waterloo, Oak Center 1.
Yeah, 303 and 47?
Yep.
Yes, 312, 055.
Yeah, she was helpful last time.
All right.
That's great. And I can read them too, if it's easier for you. So you tell me.
All right, I've got 217 and 37.
Yes. We thought, Carol, you left it.
Yep.
All right, 116 and 40?
Yes.
Oak Center 8, 511 and 97.
Yep.
And then I've got 97 and 27?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
All right, 136 and 15?
Correct.
Yep.
All right, 136 and 15?
Correct.
Yep.
All right.
226.
Give a panic camera.
Oh, I need 10?
Oh, yes. Sure.
Oh, we had some interesting topics today.
Yeah.
I appeared at Burning. I hadn't thought about the Burning one. I was wondering what he was presenting. I was like, hmm.
Yes, okay.
Now, of course, the picture.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
There was one provisional ballot that was rejected and not counted.
Thank you.
Everybody's done, you can have a motion to certify.
I'll make a motion to certify.
Save my hand.
Outcome of the votes cast in the special Waterloo City Hudson School Board election held Tuesday, September 13, 2022, in accordance with I.O. Code 50.24.
Do I have a second?
Second.
This is a resolution, please answer your name, it's called.
Excuse me. Little? Jesse's got, okay. Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Joka?
Yes. Right? Yes. Resolution adopted. Motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
We are adjourned.